Which one of you would want to take that question?
I can do it. Roger's not on tonight, so I can certainly do that. We can certainly get more detail and provide that for you tomorrow.
Okay, so Carlos, you can ask the question over there and then we'll have Steve answer it. Okay, any other questions on consent?
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple of questions about F and maybe pulling that off, the four-year renewal of the Chamber, the economic development. I think maybe that's worth a little bit of discussion considering what 2020 has brought and what maybe we should be allocating those funds to in 2021 instead of maybe the Chamber.
Okay, so Councilwoman Wiseman may want to pull that off. So, and if so, I guess that would require a motion, I believe, Mr. Moleman, correct, to pull that off separate?
No, no motion required. A single council member can request that it be pulled off and considered separately.
Okay, so we'll just have you make that request then, Councilwoman Wiseman, during consent. Okay. Any other questions on consent? And Bill's introduced, Mr. Marash. Now, I can't hear you, Matt. Are you, am I the only one that can't hear Matt?
I can't hear him either.
I can't hear him either, so are you guys in the boon room? Sure where Matt is.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Better, yes.
Yeah, that's the contract, the construction contract with, to replace the HVAC system at our Hyde Park wastewater facility. It's just originally the building and we're upgrading it. You have to answer any questions?
Any questions? Okay, item B, Sunny.
Yes, ma'am. This is a replat of the Capitol Mall subdivision of Lot 1, basically cutting out the, what used to be the Sears Building into a zero lot line parcel. There is a variance attached to the zoning, excuse me, to this subdivision plat, and there was a variance granted by the Board of Adjustment. Apparently, we have two sections of code that require street frontage. This was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Green.
Yes, and I know I did ask this question during P and Z. What impact would this have on the TIF that the mall currently has in place out there if we are talking about replat of a lot?
No impact.
Yes. Mr. Moleman is correct. There is no impact as the TIF requirements, I believe, transfer with the land. This is not selling the parcel. It is just merely subdividing it at this time. But if it was sold, the owners would have to follow the same document regarding the TIF. If it's not correct, Ryan can correct me.
Oh, Lord. Yes, that's correct. The obligations for the TIF would transfer with the land if it got sold, but this isn't selling it. This is just a subdivision action, so this action has no effect on the TIF whatsoever.
Okay, any other questions? All right, and then Bill number 44, Ms. Miller.
This is a supplemental request for our workers' comp fund. We've gotten down to the end of the year and we've got some provisions for unsettled claims that are going to put us in the red. So, I just updated it today. We need $70,000 to make sure that we end the year with a positive balance. The allocation, as far as the different funds, is based on our claims experience in those funds. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions? Okay, Bill's pending, number 37. Yes.
I'll be requesting a suspension of the rules on 2020-044 tonight.
Great, sounds good. Thank you. Councilman Hinsley?
Thank you.
37 is Mr. Marash.
Yeah, this is a prohibition of parking along Bel Air Drive. Again, working with, am I on the right one? Yes. Okay, all of, excuse me. I'm in there. Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, they're both similar, actually. But basically created no parking prohibition near the school along Bel Air and working with the principal of that school came up with this area and that went through the Transportation and Traffic Commission and recommended approval.
Any questions? Okay, and the next one is number 38, Mr. Marash.
Yeah. Again, working with the principals at this local school, coming up with some bus zones and pick-up, drop-off areas for the Moro Heights School. That also went through the Transportation and Traffic Commission and recommended approval.
Any questions? All right, and number 39, Matt.
This is a stormwater project to replace some inlets and pipes that are deteriorated. It also has been causing flooding for a long time, probably since the area was built, really. And so that will replace that, and we're utilizing Stockman Construction for that bid. They have $108,667, and that's out of the stormwater half-cent capital improvement sales tax.
Okay, any questions? Okay, and number 40, Mr. Marash.
Thank you. This is a contract with ArcNexus, and it's to do the parking lot work over at the airport and some lighting. Basically, as everybody knows, we removed the structure over there for the airport offices, and they're being replaced through the partnership with a private developer. And so as the city would go back and reconfigure the parking to match into that development, the funds for this would come from basically some insurance proceeds as well as the half-cent sales tax allotted to the airport.
Okay, any questions? All right. Yes, Ryan.
It's Steve.
Steve, I'm sorry, Steve.
Not related to that, but for staff in the boon room, Councilmember Schreiber says he's having trouble getting on, so you may need to call him again and get that connection reestablished.
Okay.
You hear me?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, we have two resolutions. Number 18, Ryan. You're muted, Ryan. There you go.
Thank you. So, the first resolution is extending the COVID emergency declarations and the proclamations thereunder. It's the same set of three that we've been carrying forward for about three or four months now.
Any questions? And number 19, Ryan.
Number 19 is a resolution that authorizes an agreement with the Missouri Division of the United Daughters of the Confederacy. This agreement would allow the Missouri Division of the UDC to take possession of the UDC marker that was recently removed from the intersection of Moro Drive and Fairmont Boulevard.
Any questions?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer an amendment to the resolution.
Would that be, or just summarizing?
Just that the UDC, the city council understands that the Missouri UDC commits to donate the UDC marker to this Missouri Civil War Museum located in Jefferson Barracks in St. Louis.
Okay, and I know that's the intention, Ryan. I would defer to you on that amendment. If that's my ticket one, or what do you think?
That's a fine amendment as a statement of the council's understanding that it's not effective to bind the UDC in any way. You know, I, we've been told that that is the intention. We were told that after the agreement was drafted and executed by the UDC. I don't think there's any indication that their plans are otherwise. So that would be a, that resolution would be a statement of understanding. This is what we understand it is going for, but I just want to make you aware that's not binding on the UDC in any way, so.
Okay, all right, any questions on that? Okay, and I don't think we have anyone yet signed up for presentations. I know Emily's working on that, so with that, it's one minute until six. So, and I appreciate council for being so agreeing to doing this virtual option. I think we're being a very good example and hope others will follow. I know Councilwoman Wiseman, you were the first one to call and ask to do that in several, it was full support from council, so when I mention under my mayor's mask-up initiative, I don't know if I should call you out specifically, Erin, or if you would prefer not to be recognized for that, but I appreciate it.
Mayor, I think the whole council should be commended. It's not any singular person's, I think, initiative here. I think it's, I think our whole council should be commended.
Appreciate everybody's full support for that, and I know there's several items that council's been great examples. I will say on that note that we did spread out a few of the seating in council chambers in preparation for when we do get back in the same room together, so. With that, we will wait here just one moment. We'll finish, yes. Steve?
Can we just confirm that Councilmember Schreiber is on and able to participate? I see him, but.
Okay, Mark, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, I'm here now.
Wonderful. Okay, great, and then I think we also have with us Donna Dietz, who is just going to stay muted until her part, so we see Donna on there as well. So with that, I believe I adjourned the pre-meeting, hopefully, and we will prepare now to get the regular council meeting called to order. So I think we have everyone ready, and is everything good? Emily, on your end, for us to begin?
We're ready.
Okay, so with that, if everyone would please, I will ask that everyone virtually, please stand for a prayer led by Councilman Fitzwater, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Father, thank you for this opportunity to get together again and discuss matters of importance to our community. We thank you for bringing us safely. Just pray that you continue to watch over us and our city and our country as we enter a very important day tomorrow, selection of leaders to take this state, this country, and our community forward over the next few years. Pray for our public service, for our law enforcement, for our fire department. And there's anticipations of possibly some troubles tomorrow. We just pray that you keep them safe in your arms and that you would just watch over them. We pray for our men and women of the military scattered around this country and around the world to give us the ability to meet tonight, debate issues of importance, maybe differences of opinion occasionally, but certainly all focused on the same goal of moving this community forward, so just pray that you be with us, praying your name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. I will now call to order the Monday, November 2, 2020, City Council meeting. And we do have some, wait, it's virtual meeting. You can view the meeting on Jefferson City's Facebook page, which is City of Jefferson, Missouri. And you can also click the link, which is at City of Jefferson's website. On our homepage, there is an agenda with the link. Or you can phone in, and the call-in number is 404-397-1516. The meeting number is 146-128-1768, and the meeting password is 1234. And we appreciate everyone taking this virtual option. Due to the COVID-19 social distancing recommendations, we are meeting virtually. So with that, I will call this meeting to order, and Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Present.
Graham? Hinsley?
Present.
Hutsie?
Here.
Kenna?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Schreiber?
Present.
Boat?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Present.
Right, item three is motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items, mayor's mask-up mid-Missouri initiative. And I know Dr. Robbins is going to join us. Dr. Robbins, are you on the line or on WebEx yet? I don't see him yet, so I might sit down and do the CBB and then come back to that and give him a moment to join. Item five, with no public hearings. Item six, by the mayor. And I might ask if you're not muted to please mute, so we don't get any feedback. Item seven, presentations for guests, consultants for invited guests. And we have with us Diane Gillespie from the Convention, Director of Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I believe she has Carol Burkhart with her as well. So we will turn it over to Mrs. Gillespie. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all the councilmen that have joined us this afternoon, or seen me. You should have the documents in front of you, and the one that I'll kind of talk mostly about is the comparison of the 2020 to the 21 budget. Let me get my glasses on, on that one. Yes, that's the one in front of us. So, looking at room tax, we are estimating a 7% decrease in that tax. The MDC swap, this could fact that the Missouri Division of Tourism will be taking a cut on their budget, will impact the co-op dollars. At this time, we're not sure what they will be like. And 18, when their budget was cut, you received about $15,000 to $20,000 in co-op dollars from them. So we are estimating approximately $15,000 on that one. Fundraising events, you will notice, we have a drop in that. We plan not to do the AEC annual fundraiser that we have at the Eagles this year. The committee did not feel like it was something that we wanted to, was appropriate for us to take that project on at this time. Prison tour revenue, again, we're going to estimate about a 7% decline in revenue on that one. And again, it will impact the MSP museum admissions also, and also on our promotional items. So our budget for next year is 1.155, roughly 11.54% decrease. Then if you go on over to mainly the marketing, there is some decreases there. Again, those dollars are going to depend on what our revenue dollars come in. So we will be monitoring this month-to-month with revenues in and what we can spend out on the marketing side of it. We've tried to keep the digital up there and with some print, some of it we had already committed to, so we are moving forward with some of that. And then we are at the very bottom, and I'll let Carol address that if you have any questions on the MSP preservation projects and the transfer from reserves. Carol, if you want to pick up on that one?
Sure, so we generally budget what is what we would consider our excess in revenues from the MSP property, the tours. We would estimate putting those into preservation. And so the 111, 767 that you see at the very bottom of the report, that's the amount that we intend to put over into the reserve for the MSP preservation. The transfer from reserves of $80,000, the CBB received some CARES money at the, here at the end of 2020, and we are anticipating needing to use some of that at the beginning of 2021 to pick up some expenses for MSP and for items that go with the CARES fund. So we have indicated that as a negative in the budget, which generally means that we have been pulling that, are going to pull that from the reserve for the year.
So any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Gillespie, Mrs. Burkhead, for those numbers and updates. Does council have any questions? And if so, just unmute yourself. I don't see all of you at the moment with the screen sharing, so if you do have a question, please feel free to ask. Right, so before we ask for a motion to adopt, I do, I do know that I would share, council would share that we do appreciate the work that the CBB does to keep tourism going, especially despite the challenges. I know after coming off of a tornado year that hit our, one of our major tourist attractions with the prison, that you have not let that stop you in the preservation fund and everything that's still moving forward. And we know a lot of needs there to get a roof back on and get those things going, but you're very dedicated to that, and your staff works very hard on a small staff to do a lot of work and keep Jefferson City's tourism alive going, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
So are there any questions or a motion to approve that budget?
To approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, or all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that was unanimous, so budget passes, and thank you both for that update. Appreciate it. And we have also, I'm going to go to number four, miscellaneous agenda items. We have Dr. Robbins with us on the virtual video here as well. So we're going to talk about the mayor's mask-up mid-Missouri initiative. And as we know, this is a topic that we talk about, the pandemic at every council meeting, because of its importance and doing all we can as a city to slow the spread and keep our community safe and keep capacity at our hospitals. So we are working very closely together, very proud of the partnership we have with SSM, Capital Region Medical Center, JCMG Community Health Center, and Cole County Health Department together. And we are regularly working together, unified, to get messaging out to the public. So the mayor's mask-up mid-Missouri initiative shows that importance. So we all know selfie with the mayor, so now it's mask up with the mayor and getting the message out of how important it is to wear your mask and take the precautions every day, and it's not just one precaution, it's several. And we are being a good example this evening by meeting virtually because we are taking social distancing very seriously. We're also taking very seriously the recommendation that Cole County Health Department put in their October 20th press release that recommends more than 25 people in social gathering settings to try to avoid those type of group social settings. And although they're not necessarily social, although we certainly can be, we know that we can easily get more than 25 people in council chambers and wouldn't really have enough room for distancing necessarily. So we are being that example, and I hope everyone listening would take that same example, if they can, and spread out and do things virtually if they can. And with that, I'm very happy to have Dr. Robbins with us, and I would like to turn it over to him as we work together and get some of his feedback on what it looks like in Jefferson City and what we can do together. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you having me. Apparently, there's been quite an upswing, as we would expect, in the number of cases. As most of you probably know, there have been about 200 positive results as of this morning from Cole County Health Department. And as a result, there are so many cases right now that the health department is having difficulty with contact tracing, so that's... I think we do contact tracing that's going to be problematic because we really need to do that as far as epidemiological information goes. But unfortunately, the health department apparently doesn't have the manpower at the moment. So that is one issue. I know that there has been quite a bit of pushback still on using, wearing masks, I should say, as all of you probably saw the article in the newspaper yesterday. I would just really encourage each and every one masks. No, they're none. They're probably number two on prevention, but they are extremely important. So number one is that distancing of a minimum of six feet, preferably 10. And number two is wearing a mask when you are in a situation where you're going to be in even relatively close contact with other people. I know the argument's been made that if people wear a mask, then they don't feel that they need to socially distance, but I know that people are capable of understanding both of those ideas, that you can socially distance and further protect yourself using the mask. So I just really hope that all of you will get that information out to your constituents and also just to your friends and family as well. You know, this is going to be a very difficult time going into Thanksgiving, holiday, Christmas, and New Year's. We're going to see a significant upswing again in cases. And the more we get the message across to distance and to mask when we're out in public, the better off we're all going to be.
Thank you, Dr. Robbins, and I know that a lot of us in our elected official position, we want to get the word out, and we know that people listen to us as councilmen and mayor, but certainly they really listen to the trusted physicians in our community, and that's why it's so important to hear your voice and hear what our doctors are saying about this. So we appreciate that. Also, the Cole County Health Department has reiterated the importance of getting a flu shot, and they are offering drive-through flu shots this week. And so you can get that information on their website if you're interested in that. I will be doing the drive-through as well and in pushing that message out. And there is also going to be another community COVID testing event like they had last week. The next one is scheduled for Tuesday, the 10th, and that is going to be hosted by Cole County Health Department. If you want information about the location and time of that event, please go to the Cole County Health Department website. So again, remember to get the flu shot and take all the precautions and maintaining distancing, and Dr. Robbins, like you said, a minimum of six feet and how important distancing is. And then also, as we know that we're getting into Thanksgiving, we're going to have one more council meeting prior to Thanksgiving, but as people are already making plans for that, we want to make sure that people realize that they just need to be creative in how they meet and what they do, that remember that they need to keep all these precautions, even more so when they are with friends and family. We don't want to see any spread coming because of that, and we certainly would not, we would feel bad if anyone spread that to their family and friends for Thanksgiving. So please make those considerations and maybe consider either holding off on visiting family or certainly being creative in how you can do that. Something else that Dr. Hate from Capital Region had wanted me to share is to make sure that we reach out to your neighbors and don't wait for them to reach out to you, but reaching out to them is important too, and checking in on them as we get into the holidays, and people may not be able to get in touch as much or visit with their family like usual. So think about your neighbors from a distance. So does council have any questions while we have Dr. Robbins here with us that they would like to ask? Okay, and with that, Dr. Robbins, thank you again for being with us in your dedication to keeping our community safe.
Great, thank you very much for having me.
Great, well, we'll keep this going, keep our community message going out there forward. So mask up with the mayor, mask up mid-Missouri. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is item eight, announced... All right, the next item is item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. We have our four standing committees and a few dates of meetings and some cancellations. So are there any, why don't I just run through administration, council, and Wiseman? Would you want to give us an update?
Yes, Mayor, we do not have a meeting. We have canceled that. We have, I believe, one appointment we're going to email about, and that will be it. So we're looking forward to December.
Thank you. Finance Committee, do we have any, Councilman Hensley to report?
No update tonight, thank you.
Okay, Public Safety, Councilman Graham?
We will have a meeting this month. I'm just trying to see which day because our next public safety meeting falls on Thanksgiving. And certainly, we would not have a meeting on Thursday. But I know that there is an agenda item to bring before the body. So we will meet this month. I just need to see what is the best day to, to do that. But there will be a meeting this month.
Great, and Public Works and Planning, Councilman Hussey?
Yeah, our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, November 12th at 7:30 a.m. And I'm fairly certain we will have a meeting.
Great, and last time you did a virtual hybrid, so I'm sure you'll post that information as well.
Yeah.
Okay, and does council have any other announcements? I'll give my announcements that we have a few events coming up early December. Go ahead and mark your, have you mark your calendars and save the date. Wednesday, December 2nd, is the annual Polar Plunge, Power Hour Plunge, that we are going to do virtually this year. But for some reason, they're not going to virtually let me run through virtual water. It's still going to be a real cold hose water. They're going to do it not open to the public, though. It's just going to be streamed live online. So we're still going to participate. We do have police and fire are both participating. So if you're interested in, in giving to your favorite team, I'll keep it confidential. I won't say which one, or you could give to me, I'll be running it too. So if anyone's interested, please let me know because that goes for Special Olympics and, and they still are, are looking forward to having that event virtually. So that was December 2nd. December 3rd is the mayor's Christmas tree lighting, and that is also going to be virtual this year. Theme is Jefferson City Goes to the North Pole. So that's very fitting because we're all going to virtually be able to go wherever we want for Christmas this year because it's virtual. So the tree will be lit through a live stream. We will show it being lit, but then it will be lit throughout the season. So it's something that people can go and enjoy. It's at Rotary Centennial Park on Bolivar Street, and Parks and Rec always does an amazing job. So we're going to encourage people, although not having a crowd on, on the tree lighting night itself, that they can tune into it and then spend the rest of the season visiting with their family and friends at that nice, beautiful outdoor tree. And then Friday, December 4th, is Living Windows in the downtown, but they are not having Living Windows in person. Instead, they're going to do more of a scavenger hunt and maybe some virtual options. So that will, will not be held in person. So all those things I mentioned are still going to happen in, in some other more creative manner. And with that, I encourage everyone that whatever your event is coming up on the calendar for the next month or two, please consider doing something different and virtual if possible. Councilman Graham?
Yes, Madam Mayor, someone asked me the question this week, or last week, are we having the Christmas parade this year?
I believe last I saw that that is occurring, which would be Saturday, December 5th. And I know we have Councilman Wiseman, is that still a go that you know of?
Yes, Mayor, yes, Councilman Graham, we are having the, the annual Christmas parade. We are going to suggest social distancing. There are, it, it is the first, the first Saturday of December, and that is December 5th. And it will begin at 4:30 p.m. at High Street, where the Truman Building is, and I can't remember the cross street at this point. It's going to go all the way down to Lafayette and turn around and come back down Capitol Avenue. And there's going to be some great space down Capitol Avenue for social distancing. Oftentimes, we do see cars with people in them along the route on Capitol Avenue. But this year would be an even better, better time to do that, especially since there are some parking lots along the way that people can sit in and wa, wait for the parade and watch it go by.
Wonderful, and Councilwoman Wiseman is part of the Jefferson City JCs that put on that Christmas parade every year. So please thank them for doing that. And it's, like you said, very spread out event. So any other announcements or questions for council? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Donna Dietz from Historic City of Jefferson. She's going to give us an update on the historic trail project. Welcome, Mrs. Dietz.
Thank you, and this is really a quick note because I've had a lot of questions and council persons have been asking. The, a group of about 20 of us, a very diverse group, met about six weeks ago and discussed what kind of historic trails we could set up in Jefferson City. We had folks from the NAACP, we had somebody from Lincoln, we had Historic City of Jefferson, Cole County Historical Society, so forth, there. And some of the discussion took around an African-American trail, a German immigrant trail, a Civil War trail. All of this has been put into about 12 pages worth of notes in that we've also pulled out a lot of other questions. And right now, we're in the midst of putting a survey together that's going to be sent throughout the city. Anybody who wants to comment on it, to give their input, what kind of trails would you like to see? Do you have suggestions for it and so forth? That'll be coming out in about two weeks. We're working right now with media on how to get that out to everybody other than just social networking because not everybody is socially connected yet. The other piece of that is we've already contacted the Mellon Foundation as well as several other granting institutes who are currently giving funds for historic-type trails within cities. A variety of different ideas that are going along that line. If anybody, if any of the councilmen or anybody else that's listening to this has any input for us, they can get ahold of me or Ann Green, who's the executive director of Historic City of Jefferson, or a variety of other folks who are just taking notes on this. That's kind of the summation, so you know where we're sitting on this. It hasn't been forgotten and it is being pursued. We just have to take it step by step. It's going to take a while to do. The grant itself is probably a nine-to-12-month process to actually get funds to start working on it. So we've got a lot of time to really develop the ideas and where we want to go with this. What questions do you all have for us on it?
Thanks, Mrs. Dietz, and glad to see there's some movement on that project. Is anyone questions or comments?
I, just a couple. Thank you, Donna, for being here and presenting on that. Do you anticipate anything from H, from the city that's needed for this or?
We really don't know right now. Most of the granting organizations want to do this in association with local community and his, and nonprofits, 501(c)(3), so we really have to see what their criteria is going to be before we actually start doing the writing and such. I know that there's a lot of research being done on the various topics right now. And I know Mike Lester's got a lot of information. We've talked to a lot of folks about this, and we're starting to gather that. But anything that anybody has that they want to share, please do so.
Great, well, just thank you for your all the leadership on that. I sincerely appreciate it.
No problem.
I would echo that, thank you again. And Donna has also brought to my attention that Small Business Saturday is Saturday, November 28th. And I believe they're doing that citywide this year, so a little bit different to kind of spread it out.
Right.
So thank you for that. All right, any other questions? Okay, thanks again, Mrs. Dietz, for that update. Item nine, we have Lincoln University Student Representative update. Would be Carlos and I held interviews and finished those last week. So I would guess that probably by the next council meeting, we might have our student member. So very exciting.
Yes.
Good, anything else to mention Lincoln, Councilman Graham?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and then item 10, presentations from the gallery. Mrs. Arnoldson, has anyone signed up?
No one has signed up.
Okay, and then item 11, consent agenda. And we did have a little discussion at the pre-meeting that we have, we may have a request to take something up separately. But first, I believe Councilman Graham has a question about a couple of items. So Councilman Graham?
Yes, I would like to take off number G on consent agenda and talk about that individually before we approve it as a whole. And that was the, the Acceptance of the CARES Act, the $834,000. And when I looked through the different allotments for the different departments, I noticed that Fire had 10%, IT had 7%, HR had five and a half, Plan and Protective Services had 20%, Public Health had 11%. And I noticed that Jeff City Police Department did not have anything as it relates to the CARES Act. Whether, and I don't, I'm not sure if it's a, a refund or these were first-time requests, but I was just concerned about that. And just wanted to hear more about how we arrived at these numbers. Was these requests that came from the different department heads? And if so, I'm just wondering why JCPD was not allocated any funds towards the, of the CARES Act?
Mr. Kroll, I think we'll be able to answer the details on that item.
Yes, do you want me to do that now? Or do you want to?
I think I'll probably.
The, the requests are really in two categories. One are specific requests that departments made for some expenditures that were made early on in the year and the process. For example, personal protective equipment and that, those types of items. Many of those items go up through the expenditures of Fire, but a lot of those items are shared to different departments. The other items, and in large part, the $834,000 are salaries, mostly police, mostly fire. So some of that money will be going into fund balance. So the, essentially, it's based on what the departments requested and what I felt were going to be more COVID-related. A lot of the police items, you know, their, their activities are mostly related to personnel and responding to specific incidents. There really wasn't a lot of equipment. There was, early on in the process, some expenditures related to radios. We can certainly get you some more information on that. I think some of that was addressed with the recent sales tax expenditure. We can follow back up on that. So I don't know if there's something more specific or a fact that gets it. It's really a combination of both items that were requested by department and also some of the personnel-related.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll. Councilman Graham, did you have any other, any other questions?
Yeah, I just said, I'm sorry, I mean, that just stood out to me that, you know, the other departments, you know, was receiving those percentage of amount. And for PD not to receive anything leads me to believe that there was no request at all or we just accidentally left, left them off.
It's not requested. There, the list of stuffs is based on items that were specifically requested related, directly related to COVID-related expenses, which the county approved early on in the process. Then there's the other portion of the money with salaries, and a significant portion of that. So that's really what's, you know, my thought is that the police department didn't have any expenses that they felt were directly related, other than what they're sharing through the expenditures of other that are showing up, like the fire, I mentioned this. Lots of the masks, we just made a big one-time order of a lot of masks and personal protective equipment, some of which is dispersed.
I know you said earlier about, about radios. So do we think that radios could be a part of this coronavirus relief? Or is that just something that we're going to take up in a, in a different budget?
I think that if it wasn't submitted as part of a COVID-related expenditure request to the county because one, it's such a place to count and the initial amount of equipment needed to be purchased and then reimbursed through that CARES Act. So that was, those are some big dollars that I think would be appropriate for discussion later on. There may be some other funding sources, for example, people money to be.
Okay, so we probably can add that on our next public safety agenda item then. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Graham. So, and then I believe that Councilman Wiseman has a request.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull off F for consideration of the council, the, the Economic Development Services. And do we want to vote on everything else first?
We can go ahead and do that. So we will vote on, I'll entertain a motion for A through H, but excluding F. Does anyone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, and now we're going to take up letter F. And do we have a staff report on that or Councilman Wiseman? Well.
I'm sorry, was somebody else?
Mr. Kroll, maybe?
I was just going to say, I really wasn't sure what the question was. I understand that the chamber may be going through some change in their structure. And I, the question may be, how would that affect the contract with the city? I don't know if we know that answer yet. This is really just an extension of, renewal of their prior year contract. And certainly, we can make adjustments to that as that final structure may be better known. I don't know if that's what the question.
Actually, Mr. Kroll, that was sort of my question. I know that they're going through a change, and we haven't been given updates, and we haven't been kept informed. And I'm just not comfortable confirming another year of the contract without something a little bit more concrete about how we're going to proceed because I don't want to just waste $185,000 on another year of nothing. And I know it's COVID, and I know that, you know, development of the economy is hard, but we need to be getting something for our, our money, even if it is, you know, transitioning it to somewhere else for a year. And so I'm just, I'm not comfortable with signing this contract without more information or a plan on how we're going to proceed and develop the economy. And whether that is putting this into a work session so that way they can present to us and tell us what their ideas are and why we should continue the contract with them, or just simply getting more idea, or more, something, something concrete from them so that way they can tell us what their plan is for 2021.
Councilwoman Wiseman, we do, we can follow through with some of those suggestions of the best way to get an update. And Ms. Bono, the interim chair, has been sending out, I know she sent out some emails with the monthly reports. There was one email she sent that had several months, I think, at one time. And so I believe those are still being sent, the economic development reports. So we'll, I'll make sure that, that council is getting them, that they're reaching council. And I know that in the past, we've looked at different formats over the years. So we certainly can do the best method that council would prefer. We've had some years where we did it at a city council meeting, but then we found that it was a lot of information to dig into. So we have done work sessions. One year, we had it with the county where the county commissioners were here, and we did that in council chambers as well, so it could be videotaped and shared. So there are a lot of different ways that, that we can get that information. I know that we've been meeting with the chamber on a frequent basis as they are looking at the restructuring part. Councilman Hussey is part of that team as well. So, Councilman Hussey, you may have something to add on that as we're working on. It's the Economic Development Transition Committee. I do know they are counting on the city to still remain partners with that, but I agree what it looks like. We can certainly share it with council. They're to the point where I think they're getting ready to share that out more. But I think they're, they're almost, this is almost a really good time, Councilwoman Wiseman, because they are to that point where we've done a lot of the research and community input, and now it's to the point where they're getting some of the information out, the findings of, of the committees that have been working and representing different organizations on what that can look like after getting all that input put together. So Councilman Hussey, what are your thoughts too? And do you think that maybe a work session? And do you think that maybe, um, a work session may be the best way to, to go about that?
Yeah, I think a, a work session could be fine. I know that, you know, like COVID has certainly delayed a lot of the transition that was supposed to have already taken place about a new structure. I do know that there's a desire amongst the private partners, uh, you know, the, the businesses at the table to, to host a different model that has more private investment in the economic development activities. Some of these discussions have included the county and looked at ways that maybe the county would want to re-enter as a partner in these activities. I'd say, and, and some of this was a result of the strategic planning process and the consultant that the chamber had hired to sort of craft a different vision for where to go with this. I think everybody involved in the committee had hoped that this would be finished by now, but has really been slowed down due to COVID and due to other demands that have been placed on the, uh, the folks that are on the committee. So I think it's close. I think it's at a point where it's, you know, ready to sort of roll out a, a vision for a new structure and what that can look like and, and we all can be a part of that. And I would say that like I, uh, you know, I think that Missy has sent some email updates. I know that they hosted some small, you know, meetings, I believe, just a couple of months ago that I was not able to attend, um, a, as they've done before with some of the updates. I know with Randy's retirement and just this COVID environment, it may have put a different stress and strain on that, um, chamber staff as well to keep up on things. But I know they're still extremely active in the best way they can be. It seems like existing business outreach and development has kind of probably been more of a focus this past year. So I don't know what the best path forward if, if council member Wiseman is wanting to vote on the contract tonight, or if she's wanting to hold off and have that work session before approving. So that's some of an update.
That's a good summary and thank you for that update, uh, Councilman Hussey and for serving on that. Uh, yes, Councilman Hensley?
Yes, thank you. And I'll just add, um, that I, I share Councilwoman Wiseman's discomfort with, uh, what I, what I think is her position, uh, of being uncomfortable with moving forward with a, a vote on this tonight. Uh, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year is a lot of money for an outside services vendor. Essentially, I understand that there are some rather informal, uh, communications that might occur throughout the year as you would expect with a services vendor. But to just try to slide, uh, you know, a nearly two-hundred-thousand-dollar contract renewal, uh, through without some sort of, you know, formal update or presentation. Yeah, for instance, I appreciated, uh, Ms. Gillespie's presentation tonight and I thought that was great. I know that the section, that the arrangement with the CBB is a little bit different than the arrangement with, um, with the chamber. But, uh, a presentation along those lines, uh, I know I would appreciate it anyway. Uh, so I'm not comfortable having moving forward on it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hensley. And I would say too, uh, I'm not aware that the chamber was invited or that staff has invited them. So I, I would apologize for that oversight. And again, it is typically, it's a little differently done. Um, usually we have an annual report from the chamber and we figure out the best method. Like I said, the different formats, we've had it in the past. So I wouldn't want to give the, uh, the observation that the chamber either didn't, you know, want to come. I, I don't think that they were asked to. It seemed, it's a pretty routine renewal, but at the same time, I understand, especially with the changes made, um, that council should have more, um, understanding and input in it. And, um, I think what's often difficult in communicating sometimes with council is there are a few of us that attend, um, very, very frequent meetings with the chamber and, and many, many things that go on. And then there's some that, that don't get to as much and then just finding how do we communicate that? And I know Missy has been holding like smaller group meetings with council members and trying to, trying to do that and find, find the best way. So I know she would welcome our input. I think that's what she would like is to know, um, now as the new interim director, what, what, uh, we would like to see from her as far as the communicating. So I think that makes sense. And if I could ask staff, I don't know if that would be Mr. Kroll, to reach out to, uh, Mrs. Bono at the chamber and see about setting up a potential work session possibly? Does that sound good?
Take care of it.
Okay, anything else on that?
Yeah, Mayor, this, this, around, I just had a comment. I don't disagree that more information would be productive for the process. And, and I know Steve will do a good job of getting that message across. I just don't want the message to get across that we are out shopping, looking for another alternative, because I think Ken has been or Councilman Hussey has been involved in the discussions. I've been just in a couple of them, but the proposals that they laid out seem very exciting. So, you know, as long as that message is communicated, that we're just looking for more information, but that our intent, it's not a vote, but our intent is to be a part of an overall strategy for the community. I think that's positive.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. Any other comments? Item twelve bills introduced.
I guess I have a, a point.
Yes?
I just noticed that, uh, we didn't take any action on, uh, October nineteenth minutes. Actually, I don't see them agenda, so I'm not sure what is appropriate.
I believe those were included in the first motion where we approved the other items other than item F. Is that correct or, um?
Well.
Mrs. Anderson? Or Smolman?
Yeah, the, the motion was to improve the consent agenda A through H excluding G. So the minutes of October nineteenth were, was item A, so I think we're covered.
Sorry.
No problem. Okay, and then item twelve bills introduced, number forty-two, Mr. Marash.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a fifty thousand nine hundred and five dollar agreement with SGI for the HVAC upgrade at the twenty-three-twenty Hyde Park Road project.
And now, Mr. Marash.
All right, thank you. I think the clerk indicated exactly what, uh, issue is, but a contract with SGI out of Liberty, Missouri to replace our HVAC system. It's at the wastewater facility at Hyde Park, which is the wastewater collection facility. Uh, the contract amount is fifty thousand nine hundred and five dollars. We did call, uh, references on this contract. We have not worked with them before since they're out of town. And, uh, they did have good references and so we'd recommend it to the low bid.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, twenty, twenty, forty-three.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of a replat of Lot One of Capitol Mall subdivision, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk, uh, said, this, uh, ordinance would approve and accept the final subdivision plat, which is a replat of Lot One, um, of the Capitol Mall subdivision. What, what's interesting about this is that people may not know, but the JCPenney and the Dillard's lots are, uh, actually separate from the Capitol Mall. And this replat basically takes Lot One, which is, uh, the majority of, of the Capitol Mall without those two, uh, properties and creates a new lot, uh, where the Sears Building, or the formerly known as the Sears Building, um, would became a zero lot line parcel. This basically allows the property owner, Capitol Mall, to, um, uh, lease and sell that, uh, individual parcel, um, on its own. Um, what's, what's interesting about this is, um, uh, it is a zero lot line and in the zoning code and the subdivision code both require street frontage. Uh, the, the property owner has, uh, uh, been given a variance by the Board of Adjustment regarding the zoning code requirement. The subdivision requirement would be addressed, uh, upon approval of this plat. The, uh, access to the property, uh, from the streets, items such as parking, utility easements, and then basically everything else someone may worry about on, on this piece of property are addressed in an agreement that is, uh, recorded and, and, and made note of on the final subdivision plat. So there would be no issues with the, uh, any future property owner having access to the property or using the required amount of parking spaces or addressing utility issues. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sanders? Okay, and, uh, twenty, twenty, forty-four.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the general fund, parks fund, airport fund, parking fund, transit fund, wastewater fund, and within the workers' compensation fund.
Ms. Mallor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this is a supplemental request for the workers' top fund. Um, we've gotten down to the end of the year and we've, uh, run out of money in that fund and we need, we need to have the supplemental so that we stay in the black. And, um, so we've allocated it, uh, to the different funds based on claims experience. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Hensley?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, I request a suspension of, of the rules in a third reading and vote on the side of this evening.
Thank you. We've had a request to suspend the rules from Councilman Hensley. Are there any objections? Seeing none, we'll take up twenty, twenty, forty-four.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the general fund, parks fund, airport fund, parking fund, transit fund, wastewater fund, and within the workers' compensation fund.
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item thirteen bills pending, twenty, twenty, thirty-seven.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter nineteen, motor vehicles and traffic, Schedule J, parking prohibited by the modification of Bel Air Drive.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. This, uh, this bill would allow, actually allow parking on Bel Air Street, uh, just west of the school driveway for approximately three hundred feet. That parking has long been, uh, prohibited. And, uh, working with the area and the school, uh, looked at that as a, as an option for parking and, um, bus loading, et cetera. And the, uh, Transportation and Traffic Commission reviewed that item and recommended approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Marash? Any council discussion or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty, twenty, thirty-eight.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter nineteen, motor vehicles and traffic by the modification of parking and loading zones adjacent to Moro Heights School.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. Again, working with a school and the, and the area neighborhood and our Transportation and Traffic Commission, basically modifying the ordinance to really reflect what is already happening in the area, but basically, uh, having a bus loading zone in the morning and afternoon for, for an hour each time, seven to eight, two to three, uh, as a bus loading zone in this area. And then also, uh, between those two from eight to two, allowing short-term parking to occur in the area. Of course, it'd be enforced on a complaint basis. And, uh, you have to answer any questions. And the Transportation and Traffic Commission recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Marash. Any questions? Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty, twenty, thirty-nine.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Stockman Construction Corporation, the amount of one hundred and eight thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty cents for the Leonard Drive stormwater replacement project.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, a construction contract with Stockman, uh, to replace some stormwater pipes and actually, uh, improve them, uh, there are some flooding in the area. There is some flooding in the area. We also discussed, uh, at the last Public Works and Planning Committee meeting, uh, utilizing Stockman for this contract. We did receive another bid, uh, that was slightly lower. However, uh, that contractor had not had experience doing stormwater work and, uh, did owe the city, uh, considerable funding in another area, our wastewater area, for some, uh, other, uh, activities. And so, uh, typically we don't award bids to folks who owe the city money. They had since corrected that, but still we are recommending Stockman. And the Public Works and Planning Committee also recommended approval of this bid. They've performed well in the past and we expect them to do so in this project.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Marash? Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Bill passes. Twenty, twenty, forty.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Arc Nexus LLC in the amount of one hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars for the airport parking lot project and to supplementally appropriate additional funds from the airport fund balance in FY twenty-twenty-one.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, another construction contract out at the airport. This, uh, would reconfigure our parking lot a little bit, add some, uh, landscaping islands and some stormwater, uh, conveyance. The project is, uh, in support of our partnership of rebuilding the, the terminal and office space at the airport and the restaurant area. Uh, the contractor, although we've not worked with this contractor either, they do have ser, uh, some local subs that we've worked with in the past. And, uh, we did call references on them as well. And so we're still recommending a bid, the bid to this contractor.
Thank you.
Have to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Marash? Any council discussion? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley? Hussey?
Aye.
Passes. Item fourteen, nothing on the informal, item fifteen resolutions, RS twenty, twenty, eighteen.
A resolution extending an emergency declaration and further pro, proclamations thereunder until December seventh, twenty-twenty.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. This resolution extends the emergency declaration originally issued in March of this year related to the COVID pandemic and three emergency proclamations that are believed thereunder. It's the same package that's been approved for about three or four months in a row now. Those emergency proclamations, uh, relate to temporary signs, uh, so businesses can, um, direct traffic, uh, due to altered procedures due to COVID. The next one is relating to electronic participation at city meetings. And the last one, uh, is the mandate on masks, uh, being worn at city public meetings. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mollman? Or is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Any further council discussion? Roll call, please.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Resolution passes. RS twenty, twenty, nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the city to execute an agreement with the Missouri Division under, of the United Daughters of Confederacy.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. This resolution would approve an agreement with the Missouri Division of the United Daughters of Confederacy. Uh, the Missouri Division reached out to the city after the city council, uh, voted to remove the UDC marker that was at the corner of Moro Drive and Fairmont Boulevard. Drive and Fairmont Boulevard. The Missouri Division reached out and indicated that it would like to have that marker returned to the United Daughters of Confederacy. They submitted paperwork to us showing that the Missouri Division is the successor in interest to the assets of the local Winnie Davis chapter, which was the dedicated entity back in the 30s. And so we put together an agreement that would allow the Missouri Division of the UDC to take possession of the marker. There are some pretty valuable releases and protections that the city receives as part of this agreement. Particularly, the agreement provides that the city is held harmless against any injuries that, or injuries that, or damages that occurred, potentially could occur in the transportation, the handling of the marker. It releases the city from any damage to the marker that happens either during the removal process, the transportation process, or any time during the, the marker's, you know, 80-plus history on public display, essentially requiring the UDC to take possession of the marker as it is. And then also, finally, it provides the city some protection against other claims, against ownership of the, of the marker. So essentially, if someone comes out of the blue and says, hey, that belonged to me, and the city had no right to do anything with it, this agreement would require the UDC to defend its claim to ownership of the marker and essentially make it the UDC's problem, not the city's. So that is, we believe, a valuable set of, of protections for the city, while not included in the agreement because the, the, the formal idea was brought to the city's attention after the agreement was attached and executed. But staff has been led to believe that the UDC marker will be placed at the Missouri Civil War Museum in St. Louis at the National Jefferson Barracks National Cemetery. And I believe that's also a military installation of some sort. But that's in the South St. Louis County area. And so the, the marker would stay, the intent is that the marker would stay in the, in Missouri and be, you know, placed in a museum setting. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mollman. And are there any questions of council?
I don't have any questions, but what I would like the more, the council's understanding of what were happening with the marker. And so I'd like, I would move Second Amendment to the resolution. And my amendment, I move that after the last whereas, whereas statement, we add the following. Whereas the Jefferson City Council understands that the Missouri UDC commits to donate the UDC marker to the museum located in Jefferson's Barracks in St. Louis, Missouri.
Okay, we have a motion for an amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any decision on the amendment? And we're going to vote on the amendment piece. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
We have, uh, even better roll call on the amendment.
Madam Mayor, I had a question. I'm sorry, I had a question. So what is that amendment? What does it, what does it add that already hasn't been, been said?
Maybe what some of the limitations are, Ryan.
Because from what Councilman Lester just read, what I just heard was this fact of that we're saying it's going to go to the, to the Jefferson Barracks.
So, so my, my.
We can't tell them where it's going to go to, can we?
No, no, I, I understand we can't tell them that. But, but when, when this was presented to me and I think other council members, we understood that the intent was, in fact, that my understanding was it would go to the museum. But I'd just like to make it formal that our understanding is, is that, that's what the UDC has committed, at least verbally to the council, as far as what would be done with the marker.
But if we're giving it back to them, how can we say we're, that's my only concern. Get past, I'm just trying to get past that.
Councilor Mollman, or would you need to comment on that?
Sure. The amendment that Councilman Lester has offered is informational, I would say. It explains the history of, of why the resolution was passed and why the city council passed it, or at least one of the reasons that, that the resolution was passed. The, the amendment would not be binding on the Missouri Division of the UDC. And so, you know, it would not affect in any way, any obligation of the UDC to do or not do anything with that marker. It's just a, a statement of the history, as the council understands it. So that, that would be the effect of, of Councilman Lester's amendment. It wouldn't be binding.
Right. It, it expresses, it expresses to me our expectation of what's going to happen.
It's time, the motion and second to accept the amendment. Let's do a roll call on that. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Nay.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
Hmm, no.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Motion passes with seven ayes.
Okay, so at this time, we'll take up the resolution as amended. So is there?
I, I move the resolution as amended be approved.
For a second?
Second.
Any further questions? And I do, I want to mention too, I believe Gina is on the line listening in, in case we had any questions. I don't hear any questions so far, but wanted to make that show appreciation for being on. In case there is questions, council have any discussions on the resolution?
I've got questions.
Council?
Yeah, and I think Councilman Lester kind of set the stage for my comments. You know, this, this issue has been a case study for me, and I've learned a lot about process. And one of the, the comments he made, that there was some discussions with UDC, I think there has been a lot of communication back and forth within the community for some, some of us pick up things little by little on this issue. You know, that there was a comment made that UDC had approached us after they found out the marker was coming down. I've also been told that there were some discussions dating back as far as June before this issue even went to a commission or a city committee with UDC. And they had some issues nationally that didn't allow them to communicate with us in a timely fashion. Also raised a question and about, it's very embarrassing as a councilman and council member to get calls from the public saying at 7:15 in the morning, did you know a marker was coming down? The morning after council voted, and I get eight, eight beats two every time. I'm not talking about the vote. And I take full responsibility. I should have asked the question just after a very tense discussion and emotions in the room. It never dawned on me to ask the question. And that brings up why I'm asking questions tonight. I just think there's been a lot going on in the community on this issue. I don't, I can't piece it all together, but I'm trying to piece it together. And even though the question wasn't asked, I think the answer should have been given, but I take 100% responsibility for not asking the question. But it's embarrassing to find out something's going on in your community when the issue was just addressed nine or 10 hours prior to that. And members of the community say, you know, I call it about potholes or whatever the issue, and takes days, weeks, months. And we all know the reason it takes days, weeks, months. You have to get people in place. You have to have the dollars. My other concern is, as people were discussing the issue on the, the side of it needs to be removed, I don't remember anybody saying it needs to be taken out of our community. The message was, we want it off of public property. And even some of them suggested places where it could go. So my question is, have we exhausted within our community, I mean, that was given to the city of Jefferson. Apparently, it was accepted by a governor. I mean, I hope he was accepting it on behalf of the city. But there was an individual in this community that indicated that she would like to have the monument. She sent a letter on October the 19th. And as of yesterday, she still had an interest in taking that stone and the marker and putting it on her property, which was private property. So my, my question is, have we explored all options within this community? We raised a lot of frustration in the community. And it was an eight to two vote, but it wasn't a 80% of the community supported moving it. 20% did not. I would say that it was broadly tipped in the opposite direction of what the community would have liked to have seen on this. So for us to go from a tough discussion two weeks ago to this thing's being ready to be shipped out of town without taking into account some of the other discussions just makes me very uncomfortable. And I would ask that we rethink our process of what we're going to do with this and make sure there's not interest in the community before we just allow it to be shipped out. If there was discussions with the Daughters, the UDC, I'm not aware of them, other than the little bit that was shared. But seems like there's information missing that, that we all have the right to know before we go in, because I know all of us have heard from members of the community, and we filtered it the way that we think is appropriate. But I've got a lot of backlash. And I just think this, this is not the way we do business. So that's comment.
Councilman Fitzwater, I would address a few of those comments. The communication that we've had with the UDC was reaching out by email. And then when they realized that the vote was final for it to be moved, then they did communicate with us. And with them being the original presenter, it made some sense to work with the original group, whatever group that may be, in this case with the UDC, to work with them to, to give it back to the original entity that had given it. And I did want to clarify, you said that it was given to the city. It's, it's not my understanding that that was back in the 30s. It's my understanding it was given to the state, which is, we know the difference and clarification there. The other point you brought up about, it's somewhat harsh for a council person to say, embarrassing that something that council would pass that would be enacted on quickly. So I would want to make clear if council ever would pass a resolution of any kind and want to put a timeline on it, that that, as you said, Councilman Fitzwater, should be done at the time because staff was going under our direction. So I, I want to mention that in light of that, because there are many things actually that we vote on that are done the next day. This is certainly not the first one, whether it's contracts and other, other issues that are done the next day that I've seen on a frequent basis. So I, I want to clarify that, that council needs to make that clear if they want any different timeline placed on, on the items. But that's a given, and you, you did acknowledge that, Councilman Fitzwater. The last item you mentioned that there was a community member who had written a letter. If you're talking about Mrs. Ms. Vogel, I did reach out to her after I heard from UDC and told her of their interest. And at the, during the phone call at least, she said that she was fine with it, although it may be someone else you're talking about, I don't know. But I did, I did reach out to her by phone, knowing that she had submitted a letter of interest there as well. So, and, and looking at the Civil War Museum, that it does also mention Sterling Price in the description of the museum. So it seems like it could also put the monument, or I'm sorry, the marker into, into context as well, which seemed to be a concern of some that came and spoke to us. So just wanted to address a few of those items. Is there any other discussion on the proposed resolution?
Well, I just had two comments to, to, to that. One, it was Edie. She told me as recent as late yesterday afternoon that she still had an interest in putting that at Campololi. The second was, I asked the question, I think it the first time the council had the resolution before in regards to who was the owner, because the resolution does say it was given to the state. And the answer was that it was property of the city. Now, unless I misunderstood, that we're saying it's property of the state that was just on city ground?
It, it was originally given to the city. I'm sorry, to the state originally. So when you said it was given to the city, I was taking that in the context of originally. No, it ended up on city right of way. So that's how, why we are, have, had to take that up.
That was the point I raised at either a committee meeting or a council meeting and was told that.
Mollman, maybe.
That was not accurate.
Council.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so Councilman Fitzwater, I remember the question. And so the answer that I gave then, and, and what remains the, the answer, is that there was little doubt, zero doubt, that the city council had the absolute right to control facilities in the right of way and could say whether or not this marker can remain in the right of way. The question of ownership was not as clear. I believe that, you know, title to the, to the property does belong to the city. But that could be called into question because the, and you, when you're talking about on a strictly technical basis, the marker was given neither to the state nor to the city. It was given to the public and placed in the state's care. When the marker became within the rights of way of the city, it still belonged to the public in the care of the city. And so, you know, it's often helpful to think about these things using analogies. And if we had a situation where a private developer built a streetlight dedicated to public use, it was in public use for many, many decades, and then the city decides to take down the streetlight, I have high confidence that in any dispute on who owns the streetlight, that the city would be the owner of the streetlight. And so using that analogy, I do think that the city is the title owner of the marker. But unlike the question of can the city council remove it out of the right of way, which the answer to that question is absolutely yes, the question of ownership isn't as clear. And, and I, I attempted to, to convey that in the committee meeting. And so that's why I think that the, the release that is given in the agreement is appropriate for this type of situation. I, I'm certainly, I don't think staff is taking a position that this should be approved. It should be approved if this is a direction that the city council wants to take. I don't think we take any type of policy position. And so, so the Missouri Division of the UDC as the successor in interest to the, to the assets of the original donators is unique as to any party that the city could dispose the marker to in being able to provide a meaningful release and protection as to the question of ownership. And so that's probably the main thing in this agreement that benefits the city. And so, let's kind of roundabout answer. that's kind of a roundabout answer to to the original question. So so just to restate it, the question of ownership is not 100% clear. I think the city is the owner and can dispose of it. But I do think that the Missouri Division of the United Daughters of Confederacy is uniquely situated to provide a meaningful release as to the question of ownership.
Thank you, Mr. Mollman. And I did want to address Councilman Fitzwater, since you mentioned that you had also spoken with with Ms. Vogel. And I certainly don't want to speak for her, but I I did want to clarify that I did speak with her after I heard from the UDC requesting it back after the meeting. And Edie's answer to me was that she has produced a replica of the plaque, and so that would be displayed on her property, so that would be available. So she mentioned that. The spirit of the conversation was that if, for some reason, it didn't go back to UDC and that it rather than remain in storage, and if we were looking for for something to do, she would be interested in in that. So I, again, I don't want to speak for her, but that, and perhaps she's changed her mind, but when I spoke with her, that that is what she conveyed to me. So again, I haven't heard back from her that she requested anything otherwise. Any other counsel questions or discussion? Councilman Graham?
Yeah, I just want to say that my vote no earlier was based on the fact that, you know, I'm just concerned that we're going to tell them where they can put this marker at. And if they decide to change their mind at a meeting, say, we want to put it north St. Louis, it's somewhere else. I think, you know, that was, that's that's my biggest concern. But and I, at this point, I will be voting yes to the to the new amendment. But that was my my concern is that we were telling them exactly where to put it in Jefferson Barracks and and so, but that is the reason why I voted no, but I will be voting yes for the overall measure, so.
Thank you, Councilman Graham. Councilman Schreiber?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Of course, we know that the vote was eight to two, and certainly we can accept that. But I think that we need to have some consideration that what we heard tonight from Ms. Dietz with regard to some consideration or some suggestions that people have made about various trails through Jefferson City, historic trails, and that, you know, perhaps getting some funding or something from the Mellon Foundation. But, you know, I think that that certainly if if the marker was not historical and not deemed historical in the in the presentations that were given at previous council meetings, it certainly is historical now. And it's historical because of the of the eight to two vote and all the hype that it's received in the media. A number of stories that have appeared in the in the Jefferson City paper regarding the marker. So, you know, I I think that I have a concern that I I wouldn't want us to be embarrassed as a city later on, if if we would, somebody would say, well, we're going to put a a historic Civil War trail, historic trail through Jefferson City, where there are a number of points that areas that could be put on such a trail or listed on such a trail. And then they're saying, would say, well, you know, well, you you had something there that you could have kept in the city of Jefferson, even though you removed it from its previous location. But therefore, you know, if we were to store it, then perhaps it could be used at some future time if we did have some historic Civil War trail through the city of Jefferson. So, you know, I've got a little concern with that. And and also, I have a concern about the cost issue here. I I know the cost wasn't all that that much to have it removed, but I guess it's my understanding from the resolution that's been put forth that that we would be moving, would be moving that marker to St. Louis for the UDC. So here again, should the city have to bear that cost if the UDC or the the folks that would like to have the marker back? So those are the concerns that I have, and I I think that it's something we need to consider.
Counsel, let's see. For Mollman, could you address that? I thought that was on, I'll let you address the part about transport transporting.
The 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 agreement provides that the Missouri UDC would be responsible for all costs of transportation, pickup and handling. So so that would be a cost that would be borne not by the city.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, Congress?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question for Councilmember Schreiber. How long would you propose that if we were to wait before sending it off to the UDC, how long would you propose that we keep it until they, until our committees have an answer?
Well, to give an exact timeframe, that that probably wouldn't be possible because it would depend upon what's put forth by these various historical organizations, the Historic City of Jefferson and some of the others about what we might want to do in the city of Jefferson. The one good thing about that, quite honestly, is the fact that it it's not costing us anything to store it. I mean, it's not, it's not eating anything. We don't, it doesn't have to pay room and board. So it's not that all that large, actually. So, you know, I would say that, you know, based on our present circumstances with the virus and everything, which has slowed a lot of things up, but I would say that that if we kept that that marker for a year and a half or two years at the most, if something isn't done by that time, then I would say that that we would move forward with with finding it a home. But I really think that it, I really think that its home is here in the city of Jefferson, even if we, even though we removed it from its previous location.
Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vote?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Nay.
Resolution passes. Item 16, presentations from the gallery on other topics. Is there anyone signed up, Mrs. Donaldson?
No one signed up.
Okay. I just want to make sure. I know typically people can either call ahead or sign up. Is there anyone on the line that did not sign up that needs to speak? Okay, seeing none. And we do appreciate people virtually joining us tonight. Item 17, is there any counsel and staff discussion on presentation topics? Item 18, any new business?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Graham.
I just want to remind everybody who, maybe you've already done this, but please do not forget to vote tomorrow.
Thank you, Councilman Graham. Any unfinished business? And item 20, Councilwoman Wiseman?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, and thank you for joining us virtually. And everybody, thank you.